Yeah.
Yeah, I'll see that.
FYI, we have no elevator.
So it's that's.
Yes, that's. It has been, it has got stuck.
No, I don't.
Yes, I know.
Then Brad got it grabbed her back because I don't want on the back of the floor.
Well, something came up that, right?
Yeah.
Nothing wrong with it.
You know, stuck on.
That was such a place. So if you do get to the courthouse, go pull on the elevator.
Yeah.
Or get a sign or something. Well, it's stuck on the ground floor. We can't get it. The courthouse elevator. So I don't know if it's a budgetary issue or not. What's the new elevator? I know it's some thousand. You're gonna keep fixing it for so long.
I know. You put so much band-aid on it.
I don't need the elevator.
They just put the controls. Have too long though.
Underneath my allegiance system. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is same as one nation under indivisible, eternal, and just as far off.
Good morning.
First amendment says to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Primal of minutes from February 14.
And we do the final as well. I'll second them.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Number one, set public hearing construction permit application for Ryan Halber, section 21, Richland Township. You guys all received the paper from DNR.
Looks like it's just an existing structure that he's adding to. Proposing we set the public hearing for March 14 at 9:30.
Is that the quickest we could have?
Yeah, for publication. Since we're meeting on Tuesday, I missed the deadline for Coon and Manning, so let me push that off over at 14:00. And I did request an extension from the DNR because I just got this Friday before I left a week ago.
10 o'clock or?
9:30. 9:30 on the 14th of March.
Did you hear back from Dana?
I haven't checked all my hundreds of emails.
I saw that.
I did not see one. I don't perceive any issue. Right order for a motion.
I'll second.
Been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. You're gonna skip over number two, is that a set 9:15? Let's do appropriations resolution.
We'll have to do that after the hearing.
You know what? Let's go to court and do the union agreements. Did everybody have time to take a look over the union agreements from both ambulance and secondary roads?
For me, for those to be separate.
Um, I believe so. Looks like I have the original here for the road. Get this to you.
I will make a motion that would be secondary road. Agreement, union agreement. I'll second that.
Been a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Or that's all questions. And it's got a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
I will also make a motion then to include the within agreement between the third medics, sheriff county. Chairman to sign that. But then it also was some line exchange there.
I'll second the motion to approve this legal 23 for the Carroll County Ambulance Service.
Been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
Before we move on, I'd like to thank Dean and Scott and especially the secondary roads and the ambulance union reps for making this so smooth quick decisions and glad we're all.
Thank you.
Do you have a proposal 23 for a request?
Yes.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Great. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Beautiful day after that six injury on Sunday. So I submitted a request to increase the amount from the county to help on public health nursing from 70,000 to 75,000. We did not do an increase last year, so this is the same rate we've had since 2020. For that, we were about 67,000 in 2019. Main thing, inflationary pressures are real. Year-over-year inflation's about seven and a half percent. We're seeing our employee salaries roughly inflating about that much. In some areas, much higher, just from an overall perspective, and that's what makes up most of our cost is the employee side of things, so. Really not much more to it than that. We appreciate all the work everyone in the county does. We think we bring great value to taxpayers from an overall standpoint. Disconsidered.
At this time, when we have another budget discussion, we'll make the final decision on.
I think you guys, the last year, I mean, it's been, well, actually, the last couple of years has been very trying for a lot of parties. I think we're moving forward now pretty good, so that's a real plus. The $5,000 increase, we get it. I get it anyway. Employee wages constantly in the business is going absolutely, and maybe a little quicker than we'd like, but that's what we have, so. Appreciate you trying to hold the cost down, which I just can't when I, when I.
Thank you.
I have a comment where they need to get done in the last six months.
I did. Yeah, well, last Tuesday, I started off with the ABC board meeting. Had some sideline conversations there that I thought were very, uh, very hopeful in a couple situations that we're gonna find ourselves in in the next 12 months or so. Was anything shattering there from the CABC, just that they're doing their due diligence and doing the best they can. On Wednesday at WIOA, this turned into almost a weekly meeting. But this was the local board workforce. I did not go down to Omaha. I did it by Zoom, and I'm glad I did. It turned into a five, three and a half hour session. I thought anticipated it was gonna take me about an hour, but that's kind of the way it works. One of the problems we're finding out there is we're not having any luck with the state of Iowa. We have board members that have been appointed. They are supposed to respond within 10 days. We are now working on day 38. That was as of meeting. So we are putting as much pressure in places that we can, trying to find out what's going on. Why are we so slow? They require us to be on time when we fill out forms, but yet it seems that they have different rules of themselves. On Thursday, region 12. Got a couple highlights on that one. Wasn't too much. Health insurance was going up 5%. Not cheap, but better than I think other places have seen. They are also part of a large board that has counties, cities, other regional COGS in it. Interesting formula. I don't know, kind of something that I think maybe we should look at that, but I think also what we have now, so it's kind of hard to me. We had a, let's see, we sold some credits for the housing projects, the Walling, Summit Ridge project. Those came in very good. Quite surprised that we had $100,000. It was sold for $99,000, so that was awful good, we thought. Of the transit side, ridership is coming up in the Dennison area. That's good. It sounds like they're getting most of their employment in the county, getting ramped up fairly quickly. Catch a cab from Dennison and here, the rides are up anywhere from 10 to 14%. So that's a steady climb that we think is a good thing for our workforce is getting back into the work. Hire some part-time drivers, had a couple retire. You guys all know the plan over there from region 12, she will be retiring. I believe her last day is this Friday. That's all I have for last week. This upcoming week, tomorrow I will be in full steam at Rolling Hills Mental Health. Our monthly meeting. I don't think there's anything huge on the agenda, but. I go with. Last week I had conservation board meeting on Monday night. It was canceled for lack of a forum. Third thing on the March meeting. And then I met with Stephanie and Becky and I with the staff from Anthony Hospital over the assessment that will be during today. And this week I've got tomorrow region five hazmat in the morning, looking for Dodge and EMA 911 budget hearing at 6 o'clock tomorrow, so that's it for me. Try this week.
I can't sure. Last week, Monday night, I attended the Carroll City Council meeting. Thursday afternoon, we had decatalization, community partnership for protecting children. This week, you have Stevens group at 10 o'clock. That's always on the calendar.
But I'm continuing with hearing. We have two minutes to read.
Or do you have any idea about a budget workshop without that? Open.
We like when the budget needs to be certified and the requirement to have a hearing for the max levy and a hearing for the budget. We need to set the max levy hearing on 28th Sunday. Obviously, that's the max levy. Over in half of that, so if you would want to have a session, we should probably put this somewhere. So we're able to set that max on the on Sunday. That's the last day we can do that because we have two weeks in between and have to say 531st March. Looks like we have a some meeting with STH on Friday at 10.
It's only day I know of.
Is that a board meeting or is that just a?
That's just us two.
Okay, okay. Well, I won't worry about doing an agenda that for that. So since it is Tuesday, I think the earliest we can do it would be Thursday or Friday.
Can you get your time?
Yeah, if we, we have to have it Thursday or Friday.
Just Thursday, I'm gonna be in hosting at 2:30, so. I'll have one. I'll probably have to participate by noon.
Okay. So is there a time on Friday that works for anybody? Do you want to maybe try to do it before the STH thing? We give it an hour?
I think.
There's just a couple things I think should be talked about.
Right. This won't, this won't be actually the budget workshop, though. It'll just, just setting the max levy.
Well, it'd be. Set the max levy on Monday, but we could, I mean, if you want to make decisions on the budget, we just do that before we set the max levy. You know, we could do it before that. On Monday. Oh, on Monday?
Yeah.
I think we're gonna do it. We should do it Thursday.
Ideally, that'd be best. Can everybody be there on Friday at night?
It would have to be.
It would have to be somewhere. Well, it's my understanding, we just needed to sign on the maintenance salary and how much money you guys want to use lost to offset the money. Oh, and that funding request. You guys did the other funding request last week.
There may be a little bit switched there.
Oh, sure.
And Adam Schwer's request for the pollution. Okay, let's, uh, let's open up the public here for the fiscal year 22 budget amendment. 9:17.
Okay, now I gotta switch back to fiscal 22 instead of fiscal 22. Nothing has changed since I originally presented the amendment. I'll go through the expenditures and the revenues briefly. Stop me if you have a question, but like I said, nothing's changed. So expenditures, we have the general basic side, $120. Supervisor telephone, auditor, 1,900 office equipment, telephone, 1310 for the auditor, attorney salary adjustment, 2214. Sheriff overtime, 1293, and sheriff motor vehicle equipment, 4,500. Those last two are offset by the revenue we received at 5793 for the Iowa SEP program. That's something we get a couple times a year. BA salary adjustment of 3,331 and a part-time one of 564. Bika and Ipers, 298 and 368. While we're talking about that, do we need to adjust the part-time salary now?
There'll be adjustment on the part time.
Yeah, there's a, there's a part.
So would you guys be okay with, if I took that, I know it's not a lot of money, but $564 out of there because we won't need that. We can lower the amendment if we just can't reset. That way it'll be a little more accurate. I know it's only $564, but. Okay, so I'll make an adjustment on that. That'll be lowered a little bit because I'll adjust the bike that I first do, so probably close to $600. Moving down, we have equipment repair for conservation. That was the tree falling on their truck. So we've got 14,000 to 24 from ICAP and putting that in their expenses so they can get that vehicle repaired. They added employee change at conservation, their insurance, so we're increasing that 14,500. 6,500 for maintenance and repair, 4,000 for $4,000 conservation major equipment, home carry insurance adjustment, 3178. Com center insurance adjustment, 3618, GIS salary adjustment of $1,000, and then Bika and I first followed suit of 77, 910, $95. And then our liability insurance, that's for the county insurance that was more than was budgeted, so $24,057. So the general basic total is 67,130. Obviously, I'll be able to over that because we're gonna adjust the BA. Moving down to general supplemental, auditor office data processing, $4,200. Local option, voting machines, that was a board approved purchase. Just an update, still have not got the equipment. We're waiting, $112,041. And then just a transfer to the jail capital fund that kind of finished off the project with $73,500. Not exactly sure if we'll need all of that, but if we don't, we'll just transfer it back to the boss. I know while I was on, I think over there, so I'm hoping the expenses will stop, but we'll see. So the local option, 185, 5.1. And then we have next conservation capital fund, stock trail maintenance, $50,000. And then down in the jail, we have that transfer, get put into the expenditures and also being shown as revenue for that fund. So overall, the budget amendment is 306,871. Anybody have any questions? I heard that thing.
Dalton, is there any comments online? Go ahead and close the public hearing at 9:22. Item number three, appropriations resolution to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Been a motion and a second. The people call vote. Houseman, yes?
Yes.
Brussels?
Yes.
Shetler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries. The last page will be me doing my 30 reports. Last week I had Westo. And you guys on their financials. Really, the only big hot topic for them right now is recruitment for employees, and I think that's the best of all for every company trying to raise the hourly rate and retainment is a big issue. That's really all that was there. They did purchase a new van. 2014 Chrysler Town Country van for $11,000. I also went to St. Anthony's with Dean and Becky just to have a discussion with St. Anthony's about the assessment. Then I was up at the jail during a movement just for purchase, and then the chamber, I did get to run the chamber copy. And I did spend Saturday at the Hupit up event, which was a fantastic task to keep that and what great economic development and bringing people into Carroll. I wish we could do it more often. Then I did meet with Senator Ernst and Grassley's office representatives to discuss some issues that are hitting locally with the CDL regulations that currently went into effect just a few weeks ago. There's more to come with that. This next week, all this, yesterday, that was CDC on Access Washington. Friday, I have the STH at 10 and the budget workshop at 9. I did have a meeting with conservation with Dean as well last night. That is it.
Rich and Jean and I were also legislative.
I got it. Third station to say things. Of course, I had a meeting last night. They were at the BGA 12, just got AI cornered, but several counties on that.
And our access one party yesterday.
Okay, it's that last week. Last week, that was that, this is that CDC, again, they're doing one through their nationals and also probably the big thing they went through what their legislative priorities was for the year. On Thursday, I was on the highway 30, maybe. Too much change there, but they are getting their funding for their study, for Snyder's study. They were about 60,000, 97,000 that they've gotten already. Friday, I attended the guest head of board minutes at the Tennessee Center for Charity. Right now, ring comes running, so we want to stand on the budget. Will be here ready and expect a 16% staff that very busy. They have been constantly having about a whole house of 15, the lowest number they have is at 13. So it's been quite busy up there. Our comp people worked out a little bit more this time, which is said that there is a really probably some stuff they haven't got built on yet, so. Saturday, attended the legislative forum. Yesterday, Steph and I attended CDC Access Washington meeting. And then today, this week, I have a radio and newspaper, and Thursday, I had an opportunity to be at the free department at 4:00. And Friday, Stephanie and I had the STH 22 regarding the courthouse. That's my schedule.
I didn't want to, I guess, I did step up on secondary roads to verify the question you had on some of those cables, and it was the tarp over and then some steel fixture too.
I, I.
Why don't we go into partnerships going to recess for however?
I'm excited about what we're gonna be. Are we meeting Friday at night then?
Yes.
Friday at night?
Oh, I have a question. The Stephen group meeting, is that part of the board meeting or is that a separate? I just want to know if it needs to be in the minutes or not.
And then Courtney, I was gonna ask you, where we got for next week? I think there's a lot. We tried to keep it a little more on the line since it's two.
Yeah. So Frieda Ammons is gonna be meeting with the board just for not a funding request, but a tourism update. She's heavily involved in the Western Iowa. She's heavily involved in the Western Iowa.
Maybe.
Something, who is it? Lost my train of thought. Conservation pays dues to that group. Um and then I, we do need to set the hearing for the max levy. But I think we, we have a workshop on Friday. I think we'll all be on board with what it's gonna be. And that'll just be a formality at that point. It's a bill day. And then I do have a resolution that I found for EEO pay. We talked about increasing our election work for pay. If that's a resolution, we can do that. So that's all.
Just for your guys' information, I'm staying away from the health insurance committee for a little while until we get to budget season. I'll get Courtney, your fees, choir, a little bit, maybe sometime in late March, first part of April. I'd like to put together a pretty good sized committee. I mean, we need to look for any different sources, so. I'll be trying to get a plan for it down and get it for you guys, but sometime in that time frame. Just too many hours to fire right now.
Okay, I think we should have passed the budget season. We're best where we're way.
I think. Yeah, we got till next year, but yeah, we want to, we want to get started moving on. Problem is just, of those things, it's just to get it started. That's right. It's just have to get it started. That's definitely, man, I'm going into, yeah, do, but we've got a good system. Got to be a good bill or no sense of change, but if it's better out, we find something better and for the employee and the account.
Break for until 10 o'clock to presentation.
Okay, that's my, I'll be there. Yeah, I guess not.
No.
That's, yeah. What is that one? Yeah.
I did. I couldn't. I would agree with you, like maybe I wish we had a.
Are we taking a break right now?
Yes, Dalton. Till 10 o'clock. Well, I like it too, you can go. So. That's why I like, I like all, but I'm like, yeah. I still just spent that whole time. I can live by the pool too. That is pretty good.
I mean, normally that would.
Which is a light. I asked for a year. The bid change was a little bit change.
Okay.
I think we should.
Yeah, okay.
For sure. Okay.
We should reset here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's something that you do.
Yeah.
Which I'm real similar to. Yeah.
Test, 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 test. Donna, can you hear me pretty good right now?
I can. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I'm just testing some sound for a different microphone for our presenter, so thank you.
Sure.
Mute, talk.
Mute, talk. Need to know if any Board of Health members want to make a motion to approve the agenda or if there are any additions or changes. Okay, Julie made the motion to approve, Dr. Heim second, all in favor of the agenda as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, got that quick housekeeping out of the way. Megan Owen is going to pass around a sign up sheet, that's just our standard practice at Board of Health meeting to, when we put the minutes together from the meeting to also show who was in attendance at that meeting. So if you wouldn't mind kind of distributing that back around and add your name to the list just for the record of the public meeting. The reason we are here today, unfortunately, and not at home with a cup of hot chocolate in this crazy weather situation, is because actually last year, the Board of Health, as a result of the COVID pandemic, that really made public health, created more awareness across the country of public health programming and the responsibilities of Boards of Health all across the country. So our local Board of Health really kind of took a step back and looked at ourselves and started to question, are we doing everything that we could be doing to the best of our abilities for the, for the infrastructure of Carroll County for public health services and systems? And so as part of that, we decided that it was a good time to really take a deep dive and really assess the three programs, the three taxpayer county health programs that we're in charge of the oversight and governance for. Three, the three core functions of public health, for those that aren't aware, are assurance, policy development, and assessment. So this really fit into a function of public health that we quite frankly, as Board of Health, probably were slacking on with having that internal assessment. So we approached the Board of Supervisors about the possibility of hiring an outside contractor, a consultant with public health experience that could come in, kind of take a look and let us know, are there, is there anything that through our status quo, you know, anything that we're overlooking with staffing levels, efficiencies, do we have any gaps in programs or services? And we wanted to utilize that data really to strengthen our infrastructure moving forward because I think we can all agree that now moving past, or we're still with the lingering effects of COVID, there are going to be some substantial public health challenges for many years to come. And so we want to be positioning ourselves to really address those needs for our county and for our residents. So with that, we put together an RFP last summer. It was responded to by the Stephen Group in New Hampshire. And I just want to provide a little bit of an overview of their expertise in this area. And then I want to give a little information, little background of our three researchers or consultants that worked specifically on this project. And then I'll turn it over to them. They'll go over the summary of the findings from their very detailed assessment. And then there'll be the opportunity for anybody to ask questions at the end of that. So first, the Stephen Group provides expert consulting services for state and county governments as well as private and nonprofit corporations and foundations that range from cutting edge public health and human service delivery innovations and reform to technical assistance with a number of state health and human services and population health related programs. The founder, John Stephen, is here with us and the managing partner of the Stephen Group. He's a former Commissioner of Health and Human Services in New Hampshire. In that capacity, he led the State Department of Health and Human Services through a major reorganization effort that combined the divisions of behavioral health, long-term care, and developmental disabilities into a single integrated division of community-based care services. He has also overseen the state public health department and developed an innovative regionally based public health investigation and response system. As Commissioner and working within the state regional system, John also spearheaded the state's efforts in developing its nationally approved CDC avian flu pandemic statewide emergency response plan, which was one of the first approved state pandemic response plans in the nation at that time. And I know Dr. Behrens is not here right now, but I can speak for him and all of us where we hope that we don't have to utilize any of the avian flu response this year in Iowa as we are watching the spread of that across the country and it is concerning. Donna Morsted, you see on the Zoom, she's joining us via Zoom. Donna has dedicated 25 years to working in the health and human services arena, including 14 years at the Texas Legislative Budget Board, seven years within the Texas Health and Human Services Enterprise, and four years as a consultant for a variety of public and private sector clients. She has subject matter expertise in Medicaid, managed care, hospital finance, long-term care, early childhood intervention, prescription drug payment, behavioral health, maternal and newborn health, and child welfare. So we were very pleased to have someone with Donna's extensive financial background helping us out during this assessment. And Richard Kellogg, Richard is a senior consultant at the Stephen Group. He has prior state government experience as Commissioner in Virginia, Deputy Commissioner in Tennessee, and Director in Washington in New Hampshire with a wide variety of experience with Medicaid managed care, behavioral health, long-term care, public health services reimbursement by Medicaid and Medicare, and much more. He's also a senior consultant for multiple state executive and legislative branches and Medicaid for policy development, Medicaid transformation, Affordable Care Act issues, and child welfare transformation with a focus on integration strategies, high-risk populations, public health evidence-based practice, employee training, and support for high-risk case decision-making, and also development of meaningful outcome and cost efficiency measures. So we are very excited to have researchers and consultants with this vast level of experience. Very glad that they were able to make the trip to Iowa, although I will say I feel like we're a little bit cursed. The only two bad travel weather days have been the days that these guys have flown from New Hampshire to Iowa. So we're glad you were able to make it here, okay? And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Stephen.
Thank you, Becky. I'll speak loud, as loud as I can. In the back, you can hear. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me clearly in the back? Oh, hold on.
I'm going to tell you, I'm not an IT person, so we're going to just try our best.
Can you hear me now? You did something right. You did something right. Thank you, Becky, and it's an honor and privilege to be here today. My name is John Stephen, and I'm Managing Director of the Stephen Group. And we, we are a national consulting organization, and I, I started the business in 2010, after serving as as a Commissioner, and also served in the Department of Public Safety, was Deputy Commissioner overseeing emergency management and fire standards and training, and did a lot in the emergency response area in my home state. And I was an Assistant Attorney General before that. And Richard is from Washington, Washington State now, and he did work for me in New Hampshire. That's how we got together, and 2010 started our business. And we're, we, our goal was to help state and local governments find efficiencies, to be more, to be more efficient in some of their operations involving health and human services. And that was always been my goal and desire, and we've done a lot of projects since 2010 in many states and local governments. And so it's an honor and privilege to be here today and to work with the Board of Supervisors, who are our clients, and the Public Health Board of Health as well. And we are really privileged and honored to be working on a project in Iowa. It's our first one. And I personally have a friendship and relationship going way back with Kelly Garcia, who's your director. And she was great, and I want to point out from the very beginning here that the Iowa Department of Public Health really provided an unbelievable amount of information, data, resources, made made individuals available for us to interview. And I want to say thank you to Director Garcia. And for that, I also want to, right from the very beginning, before I go over our our assessment findings and recommendations for this county, to recognize the great collaboration we had in in the interviews we did. We did 27 interviews. You know, some may say you could, could have interviewed a lot of people, but we felt we had enough based, once we got the interviews from the Board of Health members and from the hospital and from others, the county action, Community Action Agency, new opportunities. And after we accumulated the information from the interviews, it was really, it was just so reassuring for us to see such a great county come together with a number of people that cared deeply about the the mission, the values, and the goals and the objectives of public health in this county. And everyone was uniform in their real desire to to enhance public health here in Carroll County. And especially, you know, St. Anthony's Regional Hospital, that's public health nursing side of the county, we want to say thank you to Ed and his team. They bent over backwards to give us all the information we needed to make our assessment, especially in the finance area, and Donna will talk about that, because it wasn't easy from our discussions with the Board of Health to really understand exactly where some of the finances were. And so it's hard when you're working in a hospital environment, and we, we're not hospital accountants, we're government side, we'd look at financing from the government side. Donna's a Legislative Budget Analyst for years. And so we were able to dissect the budget, to look at finances, and we could not have done that without John Munson and his team. And I want to say thank you for them, and also for the rest of the community that helped us, the other hospitals, the other, some of the other counties we spoke to. Everyone was so willing to offer time and valuable information for us. So with that in mind, I'm just going to, my goal today is, with my team here, is to just kind of go over at a high level, and I know the report is 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 long and voluminous in nature, and there's a lot of information. I want to kind of give you first a background on the methodology, you know, what we did, the findings, and then the recommendations. And I want to say again, from the beginning, it was not our, we were not hired to come in and make a recommendation on whether or not you should keep public health at St. Anthony's going forward. That was not our role. Our role was to come in to look, to assess the public health system here, your three components, and to make recommendations for you all, for the Board of Supervisors to decide too, and the Board of Health, on any improvements, and make decisions on what that path forward should be going forward. It's up to the Board to make those decisions. We wanted to provide you roadmap, ideas, recommendations, and that's what we feel that we did. And we're going to, today, we're going to talk about some of them, and I know it's lengthy again, but I'm going to try to be as concise as possible, and we'll be willing to answer any questions. But I know the Board has a two page document in front of them. I tried to type, we typed this up, or we put this together to kind of condense for you, really, the the recommendations at their core. And so you can see there are a lot of recommendations. Some of them might feel to you that they're, they're, they're easy, they're quick wins, simple in nature, but they're important. When you look at public health, you have to look at a community response. Prevention is critical. Prevention is is one of the most critical aspects of public health. Education is one of the most critical aspects of public health. And so those are some of the areas we really focused in on. So I'm going to start by just identifying some of the methodology. So when we looked at, at, at the county and did the assessment, we wanted to make sure we first did structured, what we call structured interviews, of key individuals from Board of Health, from St. Anthony's, from the community, and from other partners and the state. We also wanted to review research and documents and surveys and background and information on data that we could get our hands on. We really felt, we felt really comfortable with the department, and they were able to give us their survey, 2019 survey of all the county public health departments in the state. And we were able to get that, they probably wouldn't do this for many people, but they gave it to us in Excel format, so we could actually look at all of the responses and analyze the data on our own for you all here. And that was really important. And they were available for us from interviews. And Heather Bombay, I don't know if Heather's here, but Heather was very, very helpful to us in many areas, and number of questions back and forth, you would, her staff would answer for Donna and our team. And I want to, I want to say that was great. And then we looked at, obviously, environmental health, home care aid, and public health nursing with interviews of the staff, so that we could find out from the staff what their day to day activities were, and looking at their finances for you as well. And then a really important aspect of our research was the National Association of County and Cities. We looked at a lot of their data, how they compared and analyzed counties of your size across the United States. So we wanted to compare what we are finding with what, you know, what we're seeing here with the data as well, so we can compare your, your financial commitment as well as your outcomes. And then we looked at a number of data sources, CDC and state on outcomes, which are really critical to your county as well, on health outcomes. And health outcomes involve a number of areas, and we've identified all that in the report. And you can look at exhibit, figures in the report, for example, like for, on the pages, figure 12 to 15, I believe, for the Board of Supervisors is important, and the Board of Health, because you're going to see some of the comparison of what your counterparts are doing in other states. So you can look at, what do we cover? What are we paying for? And what are the services we're not paying for? Where are the, some of the gaps we may want to consider in the future as an investment? And, you know, I can tell you that, I want to make sure your public dollars are spent with, remember, the value to the public and public health, but also the value to the taxpayers. So that's kind of what, how we looked at this. And we, our team came up with a number of other areas, but St. Anthony's interviews were important to us. We then interviewed the Hopes Coordinator. We also interviewed the Community Action Agency, as I talked to you about earlier, where the Community Action is doing the WIC program and some of the maternal health programs in your county. Some counties across the country do WIC in maternal health. And so you, you had a number of areas where partners were doing aspects of the county public health. We also saw in the hospital recently a $200,000 grant for OBGYN services, which we're really pleased that effort had gone forward. Prevention will be important, and education there to the community. So all this information, we were able to to assemble, and we then looked at your current contracts. And what we did is our team, we came up with recommendations for you, like I said, that I would call a path forward. And I want to go over a few of those. I do want to, I'll answer any questions on the background, the findings, and some of the other areas if I don't cover them, but really important are these recommendations. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure our team was here for you, to answer any questions, because when you go forward, working with the Iowa Department of Public Health, because in your state, it's public health is local, all public health is local, okay? And you have a state structure, statutory responsibility, as the Department of the Board of Supervisors, as well as the Board of Health, a statutory responsibility to exercise the local public health service delivery to protect your citizens in this county. And they will give you, IDPH will give you dollars, and you are the, you have a fiduciary responsibility with those dollars. When we find that there's no contract between the Board of Supervisors and your outsourced public health delivery system, that's a problem. I'm just being honest, that's a problem. And we need to, we need to make sure that you're ready to to really correct that, but then give you ideas on what are some of the examples you could do going forward? What are some of the performance measures? What are the things you want to look at with a partner? This does not, this does not mean that anyone's to blame for anything on in terms of like not having a contract, it's just something that has been evolved over the years. You have a great, you have a great community here, and there might be some folks that want to have discussion on performance measures. So we talked a little about that. We want to make sure the local Board of Health has the tools that they need going forward. The first and foremost recommendation, we believe strongly that there needs to be a strategic planning process in place for public health syst, for the public health system in this county. We didn't find a real collaborative strategic plan, planning process. A strategic plan involves usually three to five years out, identifies objectives, goals, priorities, tasks within that first few years, what we're going to accomplish together as a community. And I was always, I was always, I was so pleased with Ed Smith's being here, Ed, great to see you. When the first thing that Ed said to us when we walked in his room was, I want to take ownership that we need to be a little more collaborative. He said that to us, and I felt really good about that, because that was like the first thing that we were starting to think, we've got to make sure that the community comes together, really comes together on a strategic planning process for the future. And so what are your priorities going to be in the next few years? Working together, not just the hospital, not just the Board of Health, but the Community Action Agency, who does WIC, which is really important for maternal health, and also your partners in the other hospitals, some of the senior areas, the home health areas. What are our strategic initiatives going forward? So that's the first thing, strategic planning process. We feel a strong, a strong recommendation that you can do together, and you don't have to go out and hire consultants to do this. I'm going to tell you, we've, we've done strategic planning for organizations all over the country. We've done one for the state of Mississippi, for their Department of Human Services. We've done one for Arkansas. But you don't need to go out and spend a lot, I'm telling the Board of Supervisors here, there are all kinds of best practices, and we'll continue to provide some information and background to the Board of of Health on on the strategic planning process. But you'll then look at your public health service array and evaluate that array. And that's why we provided in this document, ideas for you to look at what other states are doing, what, and look at the National Association of City and County as an, as an sample and as a resource. So very important that you start to plan that process. Second, consider alternative funding and delivery options for public health. Grant funding is so critical at this time, and we didn't, we did not see enough focus on going out and identifying SAMSA grants, CDC grants, areas where you can absolutely apply for and get some additional funds. There was a, there's a community in Arkansas, Crittenden County, that we, we went to Arkansas, went to Crittenden County and the Department of Health, and brought to them an idea from CDC, a grant called the Social Accelerator Plan, Social Determinants of Health Accelerator Plan. We knew the Biden administration was pushing health equity, and that, this was going to be a big, big idea. We saw TSG, the Stephen Group, publicly saw this opportunity and went to a county and said, we'll help you write that grant, we'll help you, let's work together. We brought the Department of Health in. Last year, they rewarded that $100,000 planning grant. And now you should see that community coming together, planning on how to improve health equity. And I mentioned earlier, St. Anthony's recently went for a grant on the OBGYN services. Now, we didn't see a lot of, from the Board of Health and from the Supervisors, focus on grant initiatives going forward. There's going to be a lot of opportunity here. So it doesn't mean you have to go out and and hire a grant writer. It, it can be something where you put some services leveraged with other counties. Let's get together, and let's figure out how we can share services and resources, and maybe identify small amount of dollars that could pay for someone to be looking for these opportunities. And then you decide together what opportunities you're going to go after. And some are going to be from the Iowa Department of Public Health going forward, with their new consolidation of their IDPH and Department of Human Services. So the future is is an area where I think you could do a lot to maximize funding in the grant area. We talked about that in the report. Countywide coverage of public health services. I want to, I want to talk about that. I think that Carroll County LBOH has to consider maximizing additional locations to improve the access to public health. There were a number of people that we spoke to that would would indicate to us that they felt that Carroll County public health didn't extend to their areas of the county. And that's just what we heard. And so we don't know, we don't know whether the individual was, had an issue with someone or whatever it was that we spoke to, but these were people that really cared about public health in this county. And I told you earlier, education's critical, health alerts are critical. This, this can't be seen from the Board of Supervisors as a Carroll, a Carroll locate, located general area public health. It's a countywide initiative. And so seniors that are living on the outskirts of the county need to be reached as much as anyone who's right here in this area. So that was important, and we talked about that in the report. We then talk about procurement going forward. Government procurement is really important. It's important for transparency, it's important for, for general finance, fiduciary responsibilities. Again, there was no, no contract, there was, there was a contract, but it was a small amount, but the general public health delivery service contract, there wasn't a contract. The issue then becomes, we ask questions, you know, when was an R, was an RFP ever issued? We, you know, there was, there was no RFP, was an RFI, a request for information issued, to see if vendors in the community might want to come forward and, and say, we'd like an opportunity to help this county with public health. Every, every state that usually in the managed care world that we look at for states, Medicaid, managed care, every five years, it doesn't matter who the vendor is, there is an RFP that goes out to make sure that everyone continues to approve, that there's competition. And that's an important area that we saw. You, you can, the Board of Supervisors can make that decision, but even if you don't do an RFP in the future, you need to make sure that there's a contract that really represents good deliverables, performance measures, on what exactly you, the, the client wants for that taxpayer and the community, for, for the insurance of public health for that community. And that's really important, because every single dollar that Iowa Department of Public Health gives to this county has a contract, every single dollar. And they have performance measures, and they have deliverables, and they have responsibilities all outlined in the contract. So again, the Board, this is for the Board of Supervisors, don't think you have to go out and hire consultants to write up contracts for you, and it needs to be a big deal. Look at some of the templates that we put in the attachment already, that can provide a lot of information for you to have that good contract that will, that will get the type of deliverables you're looking for. And that's important, that was important to us. We, we want to make sure that that was highlighted. The Board of Health Oversight Structure, the contract, again, the Board, the structure here in exercising their duties, the Board of Health needs to have that comfort as well, and be able to at least exercise, you know, have that comfort as well and be able to at least exercise, you know, their own responsibilities by statute. Because this is, Iowa's unique because the statute has Board of Supervisor Authority Ultimate, but it also has authority to the Boards of Health in your state. And that, that, that authority is in, in law. So we, we talked about that in the report. We talked about the need for some training for the Board of Health, um, which we think that would be important for you all. Especially with everything changing COVID-19 and all the other areas of public health that are, that are moving forward and moving fast in the future. Improved community awareness. Uh, branding was an area we want, we felt strong about because we heard a lot that people did not feel that the public health was county drip. And that's nothing against St. Anthony's. It's public, if public health is a county, maybe changing St. Anthony's name to the county, the public. It, it needs to be the, the, the pub Carroll County Public Health at St. Anthony's Hospital. Or then sending messages out, whatever it is. But it, it, it has to be seen as a county function. That's important. Branding in the future you may want to think about. So those are ideas we wanted to bring to you. Social media, Richard can answer any questions. He looked at a lot of national best practices on social media, uh, health alerts. We looked at a few counties where we saw really um, great public notice on health alerts from the county website that were about certain areas of pub, public health within that county that were important for the public to know about. And they all came right out of that website and folks knew that they could go to this one area for alerts. Uh, we didn't see health alerts like we saw in other counties. That's really important going forward. Again, don't think this has to be a lot of money. These are areas you guys, you, you can do a lot with quick wins and not worry about spending too much, in my opinion. Engage in partnerships with community providers to promote awareness. Another thing is leverage in the home health area. Leverage um, your community, your other counties buying power. You have Medicaid Managed Care in this state. The managed care companies that are in this state do not want, that nobody wants to see seniors having to go to a nursing home if they don't need it. No one does. And if they can stay in the community, it's, it's less, it's a lot less costly. And so the managed care company has to pay the medical costs. Their interest is making sure they get everything they, they need in the community for the Medicaid recipients. So if you go, go with other, a few other counties and you get together and you say, you know what? For home health, that rate they pay us, that rate is too low. For what we're doing, that rate is too low. Let's go negotiate with those managed care companies and tell them, you know what? We want a better payment system. We want a value-based payment. We'll show you great, great outcomes together. But we want our rate increased if we meet certain measures. Then you have some good buying power there in the home health area, uh, we believe. And we talked about that in the report. To use that uh, buying power because you're doing so much in a positive manner to help the seniors in your community stay unnecessarily in institutional uh, residential care. They can be in their homes. So basically, um, in a nutshell, I, I've, I've kind of outlined, Richard, do you feel like you want to add anything more? On best practice or just through questions? Questions? And then the final thing is, I know there's been some questions. We talked to St. Anthony's and talked, talked to Dean and staff about the finance part of the report. I know there'll probably be questions. But Donna, Donna will be addressing the finances. But in, in a nutshell, um, I want to go over just a couple areas that I think are important. There, the three separate departments, Environmental, Health, Home Care Aid and Public Nursing. In 2021, the cost was $855,728 with Home Care Aid's the largest portion at 40%, 40.5%. Public Health Nursing was 37.5% and Environmental Health was 22%. The spending reported by the three county, uh, Carroll County Public Health Departments is 20% below the national average. Okay, $41 per capita versus 51 per capita for similarly sized local public health departments. However, and this is important, the portion of the spending that's paid with the county taxpayer dollars, 35% is substantially higher than similarly sized counties in the United States. Okay? The spending um, reported as well um, identifies that um, in the, in the area of public health nursing as well, that there is, we, we felt that looking at St. Anthony's um, sir, uh, costs, and this is something Donna will talk more about, and she worked with John Munson and Eric and, and the team. We felt that in a nutshell, there was a shortfall about 87,000, $86,000 that we saw on the indirects, once we started looking at the hospital indirects. And it's very complicated in terms of the, for, for, for us, because we're, we're trying to take out areas that are hopes related, that are related to other services of the hospital, not directly related to the public health Carroll County. It's not easy to do that and Donna will answer questions on that. But she was able to work, working with the staff at St. Anthony's, identify roughly around 86,000, we felt comfortable is what we would classify as a shortfall. Which is in addition to the 70 plus thousand that you spend, that you give to the hospital. So in there, we don't know exactly um, what, what exactly in addition to that 70,000 is being spent. Because it's a lot, a lot of it is in the indirect area. But there is, there is value there that there's additional dollars being spent or additional areas. And so we tried our best to be able to show you, the Board of Supervisors. And also for the Board of Health, because when we interviewed Board of Health, we heard that, that they were having a hard time identifying exactly what is being paid, what is being um, delivered from the county dollars. And that was a difficult thing. So going forward in the future, where, where, where the decision, if the decision is to stay with the status quo, it just, making sure that you work together, look at what we had identified and, and be able to then have a good collaborative discussion on what exactly are those indirects? Because the hospital believes that they're spending a lot of these dollars from their own uh, resources to help the county. And there's a lot of discussion going back and forth there. And I think that that can easily be discussed through a collaborative process and identify um, exactly what, where, where those dollars are going. Again, contract. Really important to have that as a basis. Yes.
Just for the non-accounting public.
Yeah.
When you say a shortfall, just to put it another way, that is services provided by the hospital that are not reimbursed by the government.
That's correct. But in addition to what the county tax, and we clarified that in the report and I really appreciate that discussion we had prior to that February report, fine. Yeah, and so, but I can't, we can't tell you, and Donna can answer the question on specificity of, of exactly how much that is. We don't, we can't tell you. But the one thing that I, I will say on the, on the dollars is when you look at, again, when you look to the future about where you want to spend your dollars, just be able to tie, tying outcomes to those dollars does not mean. Okay, so when you have um, some, you have a contractor. It doesn't matter if it's St. Anthony's or anyone, that you have a contract and they are telling you, we have this many staff, we've had this, we've had this many clinics, we've had this many um, vaccinations. Those are outputs. Those are outputs. The outcomes are just as important. So when you do a contract in the future, you want to make sure you have performance-based outcomes in there as well. And then you can start really looking at, are we moving that needle going forward? And I'm not saying you're not moving the needle today. Because I do want to finish up my portion on outcomes. Because here's where everyone in this county can really stand up and say, you know what? We're doing a good job in terms of the outcomes. Because you guys do have, as a county, real good, good health outcomes. You have good immunization rates, especially in your schools. You have, you have good health rankings. But, but to say that that's attributed to one, a, a part of that group versus the other, we cannot, that's not our, that wasn't our project. We didn't do an empirical study and evaluation to determine who's responsible for those outcomes. But what I can say to you is you all are responsible, everyone. And that is a really good thing and that was the final thing I wanted to say before I, we take any questions. And so we appreciate the opportunity to do this report. We analyzed a lot of data. We interviewed the, the folks that we thought we needed to interview. We felt really good. And we feel really good about the path forward. And again, there's not a lot, it's not a lot of spending going forward that you really need to be thinking about. You can even save dollars in some areas by leveraging and maximizing some resources and also getting additional grant opportunities. So we appreciate the opportunity and we'll just answer questions at this point. If that's um, if that's what everybody wishes the board, any questions? Dean, how do you want us to proceed? Richard, Ri, I'll have Richard make comments on best practice. Richard's our expert on best practice, basically, national best practice. Donna did a lot on the finances, so I'm going to have them just say a few, few words. Go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. Uh, I think I, I want to start off by saying, public health is not cardiology or psychiatry or orthopedics. Uh, it's, it's a conceptualization that has, basically if you look at their origination, it's to prevent disease and promote health. Uh, and that's what, that's what public health, that's why the education piece is so important. I think that this county, your health status speaks to it. Uh, the research, as John said, we weren't asked to find out who was the progenitor of this good outcome of that one or a negative one for that matter. But the national and frankly, international construction around the roles of hospitals and public health is that basically they're a positive uh, aspect, but it's undefined about what the impact of hospitals are in health status. The National Health Services of England, which is nationalized health, as we all know, has done an incredible amount of research on that and they have found some myatrogenic aspects of hospitals as well in relationship to public health. Some people here might not believe it, but that's the findings. I think you, everybody that we spoke with wants to do the right thing and is invested in doing the right thing. Public health success is based on collaboration. That's the most critical part of success. I've spoken to several people in other states that are responsible for their state county associations in relationship to NACO. And, and they all say the same thing. Collaboration, no matter what the model is, whether it's a county-run model, whether it's subcontracted, because some counties around the country don't, they contract with other entities other than hospitals. If the collaboration isn't there, uh, then you're going to have problems. Uh, in, in terms of one, defining what public health is, what the public health service dollars should be spent on, uh, and what the outputs and what the outcomes from the spending of that. So I think practice is really critically important. And that means that all partnerships in the public health arena are equal. Uh, and I think that that is the best evidence that I found about how counties can be successful in delivering public health services. You have great health status here. Health status is another construction uh, that has multiple parts to it, demographics, economy, uh, education levels, clean water, et cetera. You all know that stuff. So I think the best practice in public health is a base of knowledge that is equally shared uh, in collaboration. Donna? Do you have anything to add?
Hi, good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, no, I thought John did a great job, you know, laying out, providing an overview of the finance section. Um, I don't want to, you know, waste your time uh, repeating some of, of what he provided. Um, so I'm, I'm happy, you know, I'm here, happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Dean of the board first?
Yes.
I, I, I will say just really quick, um, whoever asks a question might want to speak into a microphone um, or somebody will have to repeat the question if it's something that you want me to try to answer because I can't, I can't hear.
No, I'll repeat it. The question is on the regional format. Does the numbers make a difference if you're going after grant dollars? That's really, that's a really good question. Every, every grant, every grant opportunity is different. It could be, make a difference when you're going after grant dollars possibly at the state level in my, just my own opinion now from my experience. I'm not sure it makes that much of a difference when it's at SAMSS or CDC or HERSA at the federal level. Um, and I think that the concept could be really worthwhile. Again, it's grant-specific in my opinion. So if you see an opportunity, getting a region together to bring someone to the table, pooling dollars to find someone to search for grants and write grants for that region could be a very, very good opportunity for you. Because the grants that they're going to find are going to be grants that are coming from mostly the federal government, some possibly from the state, but more on the federal side, that are opportunities that you're missing today. And there are grants coming out of the federal government every single day that possibly could help, you know, you might have a grant that has a maternal health component, home visiting. There are, there's opportunities, we were looking at the other day, came out for the early childhood development from, from the federal government that are putting multi-millions of dollars into early learning and education. Yes, you might say the Community Action Agency is going to go after that grant. Well, maybe that regional collaborative could bring the community action together and be a partner even in that aspect. Now you're going to go for a few million dollar grant. You've got a, you've got a, a, a group of regional folks together, counties in Iowa. That's, that, that sends a good message. That's a strong group versus Carroll County. But it, again, it depends on the grant. The Crittenden County one in Arkansas that I talked about with you, that's the Delta region. That's one of the lowest poverty regions in the United States. We've spent a lot of time, my team, working in the Delta on, 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 on a lot of like low substance abuse, substance abuse and low income issues as well. And we're trying to help the county. That meant, that one county meant, meant a big, that was a big difference with CDC. And so we put all the data in that grant application on, you know, access to health. I mean, there are seniors that you can't get access to the FQHC that they have. The hospital in that community is this family, is this uh, FQHC. And that's where everyone goes for healthcare, but some of the county area, they can't make it. So we were able to really look at data on transportation, other than within that county. And that, that grant could lead to substantial dollars for that one county. So to answer your question, you really have to look at the specific grant.
John, if I can, I was just gonna, you know, just offer.
Donna, go ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, sure. I was just going to offer an example to you, you know, um, in, in Texas, uh, you know, we have a, a structure of local entities known as local mental health authorities. And there's 39 of them um, across the state of Texas representing all 254 counties. So, you know, that's quite a bit of coverage. Um, and some of them in a, in a certain part of the state have, have come together and created uh, the East Texas Behavioral Health Network, because the local mental health authorities are responsible for the um, planning and delivery of behavioral health services uh, for their collection of counties. But they realized they could come together and so a few of them on, in, in East Texas came together and created the East Texas Behavioral Health Network. And through that, they're able to uh, share certain resources and such and planning. Um, they, they, each entity is distinct, um, but they come together and, and so there's an example where they can apply, uh, you know, for grant opportunities if they exist and getting to what John said, you know, it really does depend on the specific grant and what the requirements are, but there are grants out there that will allow you know, a collection of local government entities, which these local mental health authorities in Texas are you know, a collection of local government entities which these local mental health authorities in Texas are an example.
Does that help answer the question?
If I could add something to that-
Go ahead.
I've actually been a federal reviewer for HERSA grants. And, um, and that's for the Division of Health, Rural Health Services. And part of those criteria is they really wanna see at least a minimum collaboration of three entities, one of which should be your local public health. Uh, you get bonus points if you can include a critical access hospital or rural health clinic. And those are federal designations based upon, um, health professional shortage areas or distance to travel to, to other tertiary care or, or things like that. So from that regard, you do need to have that regionalization or collaboration. That is a, a big advantage for federal grants for the majority of the rural health federal grants. Um, but then you also see that locally, like with your assistance for firefighters. Um, a lot of local firefighting departments have tried to, uh, get those AFG grants, and they're not able to do it as a standalone entity, but when they collaborate with several others, then, um, that increases their likelihood. And I know, just like Dennison and Vale, and just a few years ago, they, they got a big grant amount just because of that collaboration. So, so the regional approach, I know you're thinking also that the mental health approach has not worked well. Or there's been some downfalls of that in Carroll County when that became regionalized. But in the grant writing world, the more you can collaborate and increase, specifically because these federal grants, they're targeting rural areas, but sometimes you have too low of a population in your rural area, it's just, it's, you know, you can't please them. So the more you can add in but still retain that rural service area, then, then the better the chances. So I just wanted to add that in.
Yes. Yep. Again, um, and it's, it's looking, question is about tapping into other sources, other potential partners' ability to go get grants. Is it competing? Again, I, I'm one that, you know, I'm from a small, I'm from a small state, and we're very conservative, and I'm one that, I don't, I don't want the county to go after a business. Let the private sector handle the business and grow and, and the county, but the county's there for the public, for the safety, safety net, right? And so, we've gotta make sure that the county is, is, has a stable funding source as well. But there are certain things that the county could or should be a partner. And so, there are gonna be times where maternal health, for example, what you outsourced to the Community Action Agency, or you don't outsource, but they actually went for those grants, and they got those grants. I like that model, just by talking now personally, that was the model in my home state when I was commissioner. And I ended up giving millions of dollars through our department to cap agencies throughout the state. But then they went and got regional dollars where the county could've gone after too, and they worked together. So yes, to answer your question, there is some competition there. But again, it all comes down to what exactly is that grant opportunity? And that's where you're, in my opinion, you're, you're losing out by not having someone looking at that. Because, I'll give you another example, health equity education or health equity, it's a big deal right now. And the county should be doing the health equity education. The county should be responsible for really promoting a lot in terms of health equity. That's an area that county should be involved. So you could be, you should be leading that effort with partners. And maybe the grant, you could be a grantee there in that area, education, not necessarily competing with the other partners. Or you can work with the community action, and community action, uh, the gentleman we met with too was a great, great, was a great man. He was the CEO and his assistant, and he'd been there for years. And so we learned a lot about his own services at the new opportunities. And, um, what's his name, Chad Jensen, right? And Chad, you know, he'd be the type of person that would wanna come to the county and work with you on a grant, let's work together. And that's, that's the type of collaboration that really is great. And instead of Chad going out there for a WIC, WICs, something on maternal health, that, there's a big MBE grant, maternal child health, home visiting nationally. And that could've been a partnership that was formed, and maybe some of those dollars come to the county, but he does the prime uh, on the grant, you know, he's the grantee per se, his organization, or the hospital could be the grantee. You know, the Hopes, Hopes is another grant. You know, the county could be doing Hopes, but the hospital's doing it well. And, and the Hopes coordinator, we spoke to it, and they, they really liked the, the relationship they have with the hospital. So there's areas you don't wanna compete in, but if you're all working together, there're gonna be areas where the county would find opportunities, but the county should be the grantee. Does that help answer? John? Yep. Richard wants to add one more.
Uh, this is a great conversation. I think one of the issues, I think, I used to work for counties in Virginia, and counties in Virginia are heavily, uh, invested with state money for health and human services and public health, and they also put up county tax dollars, so it's, it's a real big political issue. The big thing I think about when, because I haven't been involved with, uh, county-based collaboration around grants, is one thing that gets lost in the thinking. It's pretty easy to figure out who wants to do it, uh, or who, who's the most appropriate person to do it. If we were looking for a grad, grant for cardiology, just as a bizarre example, obviously we would want the hospital to do it. Uh, but that's usually not the nature of public health grants, they're all over the place, and related grants. Who can be the best entity in the community to sustain, have the best possibility of sustaining uh, whatever service, unless it's time limited thereafter, I think is a critical component that often gets missed when grants are written. So I just would leave that, 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 that's a key factor. Who can, who is the best entity or, or team of entities that would be best able to sustain? Grants go away.
I mean, I, I think that, is grant, is grant a sustainable source of funding for a community, Donna, is the question. Um, it, it, it depends on the grant. There's some that are really longer-term grants than others, that continue on. Again, it all depends, but yes, it can be sustainable. But there are some that you have to make a decision, the board, do you wanna continue that after the grant is over? If it's such great outcomes and you're really achieving, um, great outcomes in public health especially, the board may wanna decide to continue, we're gonna put some more, we're gonna put county tax dollars now into that, and the taxpayers agree. I mean, that's just the issue that happens all over the country. But then there might be other alternatives or opportunities that come out of that one grant that you went after that leads to more funding for additional opportunities. So I've seen it work both ways. Most counties that have done, that have gone after grants, they have absolutely benefited their community. SAMSS, substance abuse, mental health, a lot of areas that, um, impact education and the community. So if you don't go after them, somebody else is going to. John?
I just wanted to clarify, as you mentioned, the thirty-five percent-
Yep.
Well, I think that's important, why, you know, to look at, why, to see how we can find those.
I, I'm glad you mentioned that, the whole career is complete, Donna. Heather's still in line. Heather did a great presentation to the Board of Health on the changes that are gonna happen at IDPH on the dollars, where the dollars have to go, and home health aid is gonna be phased out in terms of the dollars. But that doesn't mean your effort has to be phased out, and I wanted to make sure that was clear in the report. And it's, there's a section in this report about that particular issue. So, um, that's, that program is so important to seniors in your community, and especially those that can't afford access, they can't afford, and they're, they're of real low income. And we hope that you would continue that. And one thing we did wanna make sure is we recommended that issue of leveraging other counties. I really feel, we know the managed care Medicaid system pretty well too. We've helped states draft, uh, IRPs and contracts for the large, multi-billion dollar managed care companies. We know a lot of the things that they, they operate and do. And they have this new, and that's not new, but it is moving into your areas, value-based purchasing, where they will pay you the rate, but if you can show them good outcomes, they will pay you based upon value an additional amount, and you're not taking advantage of that here. And I, I, I don't want to say to your home health aid department, you ought to be negotiating with the MCOs and get a value-based agreement. But if you put together a few counts, you go, you go to that, the, the, I don't know, I think Anthems, one of them, I'm not sure who they are here. All of the, the three, I think, two or three MCOs. You go and sit down with them, there's an opportunity to leave that table with a pretty good agreement. So, I would take advantage of that. And, um, that's something I told Becky too, that, you know, if she contacts us, we're, we're gonna continue to work with you on, on free health assessment, the next part of our Phase Two of our project. But if, if she needs, or the, the Board of Health needs some information on managed care, we'll, we'll help, we'll give her some information. But you need to take that initiative and make sure that, I think, you get a better rate for what you're doing in home health there, on the Medicaid side. Yes?
Hi, so, it's Kyle Newblin, I'm a cardiologist from Deer Town, and I'm Chief Medical Officer for the hospital. So my first question's for Richard, because I was never interviewed by a senior before, is cardiology just standard clinical life, or?
I think-
No, the reason why is, is because everybody understands cardiology, it's, you know, it's, cardiologists think it's the apex, uh, specialty. Well, I didn't mean it as a joke, but, but it is a concrete, everybody understands cardiology is a specialty.
Hi, so I have a few things just to add to the hospital. Uh, number one, Sandy is absolutely interested in reformalizing, uh, the relationship with the county. Uh, there's, there's, on our side at all, I think, uh, I'm not gonna speak for the county, but that, uh, the lack of a formal removal of the last decades has not been because of Will and I are already, it's just because of the sense of role.
Yep.
It's been working. And then also, the hospital's also more than willing to, to partner for alternative sources of stable funding. Because that's, I think Rich is the one who kinda hits it at that, what we don't wanna do is ever put outcomes of this. We don't wanna start a program that might be subject to either asking the taxpayers to refund it in two years or cancel the program. But the hospital is more than a partner on alternative sources. I mean, why, you know, I think that's, it's an easy ask to say, but we'd be willing to look for alternative sources of funding for programs that doesn't involve taxpayer money.
I mean, Kyle, it's, I appreciate the comments, and I just, I know when, when Ed gave me that grant, you guys received that two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant on the OB-GYN services. I mean, the, the problem with these grants is that, that, that issue's gonna happen anyways, no matter what grant. And so even that one is susceptible, you know, you're gonna be asked that question, how are we gonna continue these services? So, you know, either you just don't go for grants, or, but I think they're a good opportunity, but you're, you're, you raise a good point. But it's something you have to be cognizant of, no matter what, when you're applying for that grant. Yeah, there's a lot of federal dollars out there that are helping communities each and every day that, um, we wanna make sure you just at least have someone going out there that's searching. That's what we didn't see, that's the gap. There's no one person that's responsible for searching for opportunities like that for the county. That's what we wanted, yes?
Hi, with all due respect for your fact, because I understand where you're at with the point of stable funding. What you also have to look at is public health should be a community effort as far as what the community needs, what any county needs. So if you have an opportunity to write a grant that is assured funded grant, let's say a year, you might enter your concern of saying, at the end of the year, that we're kind of left, we have to have this need. But you do research along the way to show how well that grant has been implemented. You, you build during that great funding time. Focus support and the facts to make that a long-lasting program. And then it's, do you need to lend it, or are these are probably benefiting from it? And I would hate to see members of the community or members of the county have certain needs that should be sponsored by public health, and then say, well, we can't give them that because we can't make it longstanding. We need to look at what the community needs, we need to be using that grant funding to build a program, implement a program, and see how we can make it longstanding rather than looking at, we shouldn't do it because right now we can't create that.
Any other questions? Yes, in the back? Oh, yes, yep. Yeah, and I wanna, um- Cindy, I wanted to say thank you to, for your help during our assessment. And I, I gotta tell you, I was driving to the airport, Cindy was available and called me back, and we had a long chat and, uh, about Hopes and her contracting process. That, that contract that Hopes has with St. Anthony's is an example of the type of contract you may wanna look at. And so we included that in our material for you to look at, it was, it's a good template. It's, it's why, one of the reasons why I don't want you to go off thinking you have to spend a lot of contract, doing hefty contracts. You could use Cindy's contract as an example with the hospital, and there's some great performance measures in that contract. So just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, Cindy. Yep?
I'm Fred Richardson, Ward Chair of Manning Regional Healthcare Center. Originally Lynn was gonna come, but it looks like she isn't, so she asked me to. I'm not sure. Uh, I asked me to come up, and one of the things that I think- Asked me to come up, and one of the things that I think, first want to say, I'm not critiquing St. Anthony's partnership with us, certainly my side are not have enough information on those details. But what I want to make sure is that we don't get left out. And, you know, we, we offer substance abuse treatment, we offer people-like solutions which deals with mental health of our aging population. We offer education, we offer mammograms for those that can't afford it. We, we do still have a shortfall in many, many ways. And I want to make sure, and it should be that we don't get left out of discussion. Strategic strategic planning process, there should be that we're invited in for interviews or study, that we are a major player in that, because we do offer these services to any area, which is, I don't want us to be left out of that. Mention here a potential partner for some things at the end, but I think that we are a, I will let Lynn try the issues still on, and I know we got to.
Lynn, did you want to add anything?
No, I think Brett said it very well, that we just want to make sure that we have a seat at the table and be able to advocate for our community and make sure they're getting the public health services that are available to them.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure, if it's, as a layboard member, you know, I, I don't want that, my comments come out as a critique, because I don't follow what Board Health does. I mean, five years ago, the only thing we thought about as Board Health is, well, why aren't we giving the flu shots in the, at school? And why is someone else doing it? But now, of course, with pandemic, oh my gosh, there's so many things like, oh, you know, we should coordinate with, or vaccine, and not saying, well, the clinic's in Carroll. Well, we have a significant population that can't drive to Carroll, or, or shouldn't be driving to Carroll. And we want to be part of that, these students, so that's, that's my comments.
And I will underscore Brett, in our interview with Jill, is Jill here? Jill, thank you for your time. Jill and Lynn was excellent, eye-opening, too, and it was helpful to us. And when we issued our recommendations, when we talk about strategic planning involving all the partners of this county, it, it speaks to exactly what you said. And I, I, you know, I think that, that, I know that, talking to Dean, he, he agreed 100% with that. I know the board is saying that today. So I, I can't underscore what you said more, but I want to thank you publicly for your hospital's help for us as well. And especially what you did during the immunizations, and actually the early on pandemic vaccinations, working with the hospital, too, St. Anthony's and, you know, the whole community. That's why I said about a lot of different people coming together. This is a great, great community. Any other questions? Think we, we're, we're done? Okay, so it, it, the only other thing here for us is the Community Health Needs Assessment we're working on with the Board of Health, and we'll have something for you in the next few months on that. And again, I'll continue to be available, my team, to assist Becky and, and the Board of Health and Dean in whatever they need as far as like resources from our report. Okay? Thank you all.
I don't have any, any other words to say, but I guess I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Julie, do I have a second? Dr. Heim, all in favor of adjourning the meeting? Say aye. Okay, and we'll just be communicating on, on what our next steps are with moving forward. So I guess more information to follow.
Can someone do me a favor and end the Zoom meeting?